We are live and recording.
Yes, we are.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We did have an awfully long business meeting earlier today, but certainly thank all of our citizens for their engagement today. It is Tuesday, October 14th. Welcome to our Commissioners' Land Use Meeting and Public Hearing. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask that you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Counsel, do we have certification of the agenda today?
You do, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda. Appropriate posting has been made where necessary, and you have jurisdiction over these matters.
Thank you, counsel. And then, do commissioners have any disclosures for items on this agenda today?
No, sir.
Nope.
Okay, and I have none either. With that, we're going to move to item two, our land use meeting agenda items. There are actually no items submitted for land use today. So we'll move to item three, our public hearing agenda items. Item 3A is Wildcat Regional Park Land Disposal Request, project file MI 2025-015. Mike Basica presenting for staff, and I think I see Steve Koster, not Mike. Hi, Steve.
Hi, Commissioner. Mike was called away unfortunately, and so I'm standing in for him today. So, yeah, so Steve Koster for Planning Services. This request is from the Highlands Ranch Community Association for Douglas County to convey to it a 202-acre tract of land that was originally conveyed to Douglas County for the Wildcat Regional Park. The quitclaim deed that would be used to convey it includes requirements that the property be used for park and recreational purposes, and that it be developed for public use within three years of the transfer. So, when we get these requests, we seek comment from county departments and divisions. Public notice is provided as required, and in this case, because the land was conveyed as part of a development, notice was also provided to the original conveyor, Shea Homes. And then we have our hearing. During the process, engineering did ask that HRCA work with the county on some additional right-of-way for Griggs Road, and HRCA is aware of this request and is working with engineering. We didn't really get any other comments through that process. So, the site is in kind of the northeastern part of the backcountry area, south of the residentially developed portions of Highlands Ranch. It is in the high plateau non-urban area, and it's part of the overall Highlands Ranch non-urban area. Here you see an aerial of the site. Griggs Road abuts the site immediately on the west. Monarch Boulevard is just a little bit off the site on the east, and the site is actually completely surrounded by property owned by HRCA as part of the backcountry. So, Wildcat Regional Park was conveyed to the county in 2011 in fulfillment of PD commitments. The county has considered various scenarios for development of the site over the years, and now HRCA has proposed a passive recreation and open space uses for the site, and has asked to have the land brought into its ownership so that it can fulfill that goal. You can see their conceptual plan here. They're actually proposing to integrate trails on the site with trails off-site, and Mike Bailey is also here to talk more about this plan. But it does work to integrate with the larger trail network in that area. When we go through the review of a land transfer request, we review those various considerations laid out in the procedures to make sure that it's suitable for what it's being asked for, to make sure that we follow statutory requirements, and we went into that in greater detail in the staff report. And ultimately, conveyance of the land is at the board's discretion, and because this land is in a planned unit development, it does require a finding by the board that the governmental use or purpose of the land will be furthered by disposal of it to HRCA. So, that's my presentation. Otherwise, if you have questions, otherwise we'll turn things over to Mike Bailey.
Okay, great. Any questions of staff from the board?
No questions.
No questions. Just appreciate all the work.
Okay, I have a few questions, but I'll reserve those following the presentation from HRCA, and we'll welcome Mike Bailey.
Commissioners, first and foremost, I'd like to recognize a couple of my colleagues. Mark Gible is here with me today, along with Woody Bryant, to assist in this brief presentation or reiteration of what we've gone through the past year and a half with you. And I'd also like to recognize today that our esteemed Chair Monica Waston is present, along with our esteemed Vice President Dan Brown with that. And again, gentlemen, thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I think this is an epitaph, this proposal that you're going to consider today is a true epitaph of what we can do, shared successes in working together with HRCA and the county, and bring something to fruition that will everybody within the region can be proud of and clamor for. With that said, I think it's important to recognize, we've started this endeavor in June of 2024, as you know. At that point in time, this initiative was brought before our 95 district delegates. And just so that all of you know, that representation, 95 individual delegates, represent each and every community, each and every neighborhood in Highlands Ranch. They're either appointed and/or elected by their local sub-association. When they made that vote back in June of '24, it was unanimous, 95, coupled with a unanimous vote of our Board of Directors of five. That's 100. Additionally, our sister entity, the Highlands Ranch Metro District, supported this endeavor and put written communication in our initial packet. Gentlemen, that's 107 electorate and/or appointed representatives of the community of Highlands Ranch. And I think it's very important to note that this was in unison and collaboration throughout our community. This is something that is vested interests of our entire community. With that being said, there's numerous regional benefits that COZAC has supported along the way, the meetings that we presented to them. I know in your packet you have a recommendation from your committee, COZAC, but our neighbors, Sterling Ranch, Lone Tree, Castle Pines North, all in collaboration support this regional project. At this point in time, I'd like to bring Mark Gible up. He's been instrumental in designing the proposed park and the amenities that we're bringing. And before Mark gets up here, I'd like to also share too, when we commenced in this project, as you know, a little bit over a year ago, we were simply talking about making a walking path through there. After talks and collaboration with the county staff, HRCA has stepped up to the plate, and we're bringing forward 150 acres to add to this. And with that, I'm going to have Mr. Gible go into the specifics of what that proposal will entail.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Gible?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's good to be in front of you. I'll forward here to the slide with map if I can. Where am I pointing this? There we go. Mike just went over that stuff. I'm going to go right to the map here. So, this is our conceptual plan here. As Mike said, the blue trails there are what we've added to this project. The outline of Wildcat Regional Park is in that turquoise color. The white trails are the surface trails that we plan to add, six to eight feet wide. Keep in mind, this is a conceptual plan still, so the mileage can plus or minus a little bit there until we get final design in. Those surface trails will be utilized by families and seniors, and designed for pedestrians with easy grades and a nice walk through the prairie with chances for wildlife viewing and interpretive signs. The bike skills area on the northern section will be a new amenity for northern Douglas County, and I just visited a bike park at Arapahoe County today to start figuring things out there and what they like and don't like and have done. And they assure me it will be a well-used amenity there. Those blue trails are going to be some bike-only directional trails to add some additional skill development, and much-needed and desired trails. You know, we've been working with the bike community for at least a decade on some sort of bike-only and downhill skills trails there. All of these connect to the existing, or there are several connections to the existing Douglas County East-West Trail. This area effectively fills in a nice gap, which I can show you in a minute, and further connects the regional trail system. We're working on the design of the parking lot still. Looks like anywhere from 50 to 120 spaces. We're figuring that out, and are almost there. We want to be sure to overbuild the parking lot to avoid parking on the streets and in the neighborhoods adjacent to this area. This is just a wider view of the area and showing the regional connections to the area. On the far-right corner there, the northeast corner, is the Bluffs Regional Trail, which is heavily utilized and busy. This should take some pressure off of that trail system, and then connects the Douglas County Trail System all the way over to Redstone Park and Chatfield State Park. Some further specifics on the trails. Surface trails, approximately five miles. Hopefully, some more year-round use. Most of our trails are natural surface, so hard to use during the muddy season, so will reach more people that way. And a different audience will allow dogs on those trails, and I mentioned seniors and families. Bike-only trails, a total of about five to six miles. Single-use directional trails is something our community has desired for a long, long time now. The bike skills area, anywhere from three to four acres of developed trails with features and bridges and berms and pump tracks and things like that. Think of it as a playground for bikes, and all ages will be served. When I was at Arapahoe Counties today, the median age was probably 10 years old. A lot of young kids on it. Further benefits of this conceptual plan, as I mentioned, the connectivity to existing trail systems. It's going to make our entire trail system and the Douglas County East-West Trail safer by removing bikes and giving bikes an area where they can go faster with the directional trails and not worry about pedestrians. Accessibility to different audiences and variety and diversity in the trails that we offer. And of course, conservation is always at the top of our mind. We manage the backcountry with recreation, conservation, education as our three pillars. This is in line with that, and further protects a lot of the backcountry from further trail development. Wrapping it up, you know, expanding the public access, we're adding 150 acres to the 202 acres for those bike-only trails, making this a true regional benefit. And our goals with the county aligning with those goals to make sure that this has a broad public access component to it. And of course, a strong return on the investment for the county with the land that we're adding, the amenities that we're adding, and adding just a regional amenity that everyone's going to value for a long, long time. That is all I have tonight, or this afternoon.
Great. Thank you both. Any questions for either staff or HRCA?
No questions.
No questions. Just really appreciate the presentation, the teamwork that is between the county and HRCA here with 202 acres coming from the county as proposed, and 150 acres being added from HRCA to find that perfect balance between conservation and recreation. It has come a long way since, just before I became a county commissioner, there was another proposal, and I thought I saw, I thought I saw it on the slideshow, actually, to really urbanize this area. And I am just so happy that the two, that HRCA and Douglas County has come together in a way to not urbanize it in that manner. So, we can move that slide off there, because we're not going to urbanize it like that. So, thank you for your presentation, all your hard work.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. So, for staff, I mean, going back perhaps for those online or for the listening public, do you want to describe to us the original restriction in the land dedication?
Yes. This park was dedicated to the county as part of the Open Space Conservation Agreement, which was entered into in 1988. And it was set aside, more formally, this particular site was set aside then in a follow-up agreement in 1996 between Douglas County Shea, or, sorry, at that time, Mission, and HRCA identifying this site. Those agreements always anticipated the possibility that it could be any one of the partners that could develop it. And then in 2000, 2000 or 2001, the final plan for the open space conservation area was approved. Again, that was adopted by both Douglas County, among Douglas County Shea and HRCA. And again, it set this land aside to come to the county as a regional park, but it was not precluded from being developed in a different way. And so, that's why the, although this was given to the county for a governmental purpose, it can be distributed if the governmental purpose will be furthered by the disposal. And so, that's really what we're looking at here, is having this developed still as a public park. And so, that's where that finding requirement comes from, is this being governmental use in a PD.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Koster. Maybe for the county attorney, if you wanted to provide us that specific language in the original conveyance?
I don't have the conveyance in front of me, but I will agree with Mr. Koster on that. And there is no legal limitation on us conveying this to Highlands Ranch. But for the same exact purpose that was originally conveyed for, we're just going to allow them to maintain it and develop it.
Right. And what was that original purpose?
I believe it was a park, if it was, but I think it was a slightly different use of the park. It was a little bit more active of a use park than the current passive designation. With that being said, the park is still, has very, a lot of still uses. So, you can use the hiking, you can use the trail space, you can use areas for picnicking, things like that. So, it wouldn't be the concept of like Zebulon that we were originally talking about, that robust nature of the park, but still a natural use of a park, and while preserving the nature.
Yeah. Looks like Mr. Koster might have the specific language.
Yes, Steve Koster again. So, the definition in the PD for regional park is, used herein shall mean a major park that offers recreational opportunities of a nature, or of such wide variety that it attracts people of the widest possible range of interest, of age or interest, without limiting the generality of the foregoing. A regional park may include some or all of the following uses: irrigated, multipurpose playfields, picnic units, playgrounds, restroom facilities, non-motorized, multipurpose trails, and group picnic pavilions.
Thank you for that. I think the history is important. Obviously, those have been around for a little while. Remember Mission Viejo, and I know a lot of the HRCA delegates and leadership is certainly cognizant of that conveyance and the purpose for that. I think what was a struggle for us is the original 1994 measure for Parks, Open Space, and Historic was set to sunset. And it took several years of conversation to advance that as a board to the ballot. That was back in 2022, with the notion that we would absolutely be working on unique historic sites, more open space, and then, of course, parks. We had a pretty robust discussion about parks in the previous meeting. I think that's relevant because the original language associated with the conveyance contemplated a regional park that was open to the public. And we certainly are aware that other jurisdictions have land use dedications that can restrict the public, and the public has a very limited ability to access those lands that they are paying for through taxpayer dollars. This is not one of them. And I know one of the priorities for the county was to make sure that as a baseline, we were ensuring that this would be a passive recreational amenity. So, high compliments to the leadership of HRCA for engaging with those you represent. I think that was obviously a very challenging dynamic, because after '22, we said, hey, we want a sports village somewhere. And of course, the conversation turned to Highlands Ranch, and this language in the original conveyance is a possibility. So, again, huge thanks to HRCA and the leadership for identifying with their residents that, no, this is not an active recreational park, nor should it be. This can certainly be, though, passive recreation. And I think part of the nuance of the conversations we had as a county with HRCA was not complete open space that would be restricted to the public, and there might be some desire for that. But really, this nice compromise where you have 202 acres of really pristine land that is only passive recreation. And huge compliments to Mark Gible and others for the design. I think it perfectly marries that notion of passive recreation with really great open space that those neighbors will be able to enjoy. So, great job, and thank you for adding the additional bike amenities. I know, gosh, it's probably five, six years ago, we had the entire cycling community reaching out about, we need to have these flow tracks, we need to have these trails. I imagine they're thrilled with the design. So, thank you so much for that. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Okay. I don't have any either, and I think this certainly reflects our understanding. Do you want to talk a little bit, counsel, about the reverter language?
Yes, so there is a requirement that there is an actual development there, and the county will continue to observe this and make sure that there is investment by Highlands Ranch. In the event that that doesn't occur, there would be an opportunity for the county to take that land back and make sure that it is being used for the purpose that it's intended for.
And with that right of reverter, what is the time limit that HRCA has? I'm recalling three years, right?
I believe it's three years, too, from our discussion. Yeah, it is three years.
Mr. Bailey, any sense about timing on this? Okay, I'm going to have you, speaking of the mic, say it doesn't pick up, unfortunately, unless it's in the way.
We're just ready to launch whenever we get the go-ahead from the commission.
Absolutely. Well, we might, I don't want to predetermine our vote today. I think we are ready to launch as well. But assuming that things go your way today, do you have any sense of timing for completion?
We're out for design. The proposals are coming in as we speak.
Yeah.
I'm confident that we can meet the three-year timeframe.
Great. Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Last call. All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Oh, yeah, let me ask if there's any citizen comment. Any citizen comment with regard to this item? Okay, not seeing any in the room. Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you for that. So, with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
Colleagues, you know, we know that we, obviously, had a very vigorous meeting. In the meeting before, we've had many meetings on how to use areas for developing active parks. And we know, you know, some of those do face criticism, as much as they face the support, but we can't always cover every base. It's, we've put a lot of work into how can we do something, at least something for everyone over the last year when it comes to parks. When it comes to open space, I'm sure we're, you know, we're aware, we are in the middle of an open space acquisition negotiation now to add to the open space lands of Douglas County. And of course, we have other open space lands that we struggle to work within our budget to develop for access. For that reason, once HRCA came before the board to explore taking this action, I thought it was phenomenal. I thought it was a great idea, a great way to go. I do believe that we are really merely transferring what is a government service and a government use of this land to the willing and happy hands of HRCA. And so, I am more than happy to make a motion, finding that the governmental use or purpose of Wildcat Regional Park will be furthered by disposal of the land through conveyance to the Highlands Ranch Community Association. Project file is MI 2025-015.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously.
With Mr. Chair, with that, I move to, now that we have found that it is a worthy disposal of land, I move to approve the conveyance of Wildcat Regional Park to the Hans Ranch Community Association, project file MI 2025-015.
I second, referencing my comments to the prior motion.
Great. So, we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet. So, with that, we're going to move on to item 3B, which is Parks, Trails, Historic Resources, and Open Space Funding Agreement between Douglas County and the Highlands Ranch Community Association for the construction of Wildcat Regional Park and the adjoining trail network in the amount of $3,500,000. Dan Dirts presenting for staff.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. Dan Dirts for staff. Highlands Ranch Community Association is requesting funding from the Parks, Trails, Historic Resources, and Open Space Sales Tax in the amount of 3.5 million to construct a passive trail network with a trailhead on approximately 350 acres in an area known as Wildcat Regional Park and within the Highlands Ranch Community, Highlands Ranch Open Space Conservation Area. The Parks, Trails, Historic Resources, and Open Space Sales Tax Resolution requires COZAC review, and for COZAC to review and provide a recommendation on funding from the Trails and Open Space Account, and provide a recommendation to the board regarding the use of those funds. This has been a lengthy process for us. We've been working on this for quite some time, a little back and forth with COZAC, beginning basically on January 9th, HRCA first presented this passive use trail concept to COZAC. COZAC did provide HRCA and Open Space staff with constructive feedback pertaining to the use of the property. COZAC was very much in support of the passive use, but had some concerns pertaining to the amount that was requested at that time. The amount requested back then was 5.4 million. HRCA has worked with staff on that, and we've gone back and forth on that to reduce those numbers significantly. And then, more recently, brought that back to COZAC for another review. COZAC has recommended providing the project with 3.5 million in funding. The sales tax does require that we go back to the board with this as well. The board has seen this multiple times at various work sessions, and the board has also had concerns about the initial request of 5.4 million, and asked staff to work with HRCA to reduce those costs, and also to provide a larger public benefit. Staff did work to do that, and again, the connections to the regional trail system, I think, shows that the interest of HRCA was to connect to the Douglas County Network. This trail system will link to the Douglas County East-West Trail, providing much further trail access for residents. And, most importantly, too, the three-year requirement to get this project completed so that the property does not just sit there, that it is available for the use of the public. This is the same exhibit that was provided earlier. Staff assessment. Do want to note that the current balance within the Trails and Open Space Account is currently approximately $24.3 million. If the board chooses to do so, the board may approve the funding request in the amount of 3.5 million. And this concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer questions. And I do believe that Mr. Bailey and his team are available to answer questions regarding that funding as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dirts. Any questions for staff? Okay, I don't have any either. Mr. Bailey, do you want to approach again?
I think, first thing, first and foremost, Commissioners, when we initially met with COZAC... COSAC, the initial ask was 5.4 million. After numerous discussions at the staff level and with the Commissioners, we came back, obviously, with the 3.5 request, substantially reducing. In addition to that, we had brought forward the 150 acres of HRCA land to almost double the size of this regional park. I think we've done due diligence in collaboration with county staff in significant reduction of the asked monetary award, but additionally, we reached down deep end and to bring the 150 acres as a contribution to this worthwhile regional project.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any questions for HRCA?
No questions from me, but just again, a thank you to the diligent work. I know the plan that came in January versus the plan now, this plan is more affordable, and actually, I think it's a better plan. And I think the, especially the residents that kind of back up to that area, really appreciate the further work that went into it. And it's hard to find anyone that doesn't love this updated plan, the new parking, the county commitment to pave the road, put a roundabout in, just the teamwork between HRCA and Douglas County can't be emphasized enough, because it's gonna be great, it's gonna be historic, and it's something, I know, growing up in the area, and I think Commissioner Layden, you're not far either from this park, we're both gonna be able to get on a trail someday and go.
Lone Tree West is what I usually refer to it as.
Yeah, we're gonna be able to go from the west of Douglas County to the east of Douglas County, and actually, we already, the board, even before I got here, connected these trails to the northwest Highland Canal Trail. So you could go from east-west up to DIA, you can go everywhere across Colorado. And I think for 3.5 million investment from the fund that the voters passed overwhelmingly, I think it's, like, will be an amazing amenity and amazing example of teamwork.
That's great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
I have no questions. I just think it was great work, and, you know, great work by you, great work by your team and your board. Good job with our staff, Mr. Dirz. I agree with you, Mr. Bailey, I think it is a better plan than what was originally proposed. I'm overjoyed by it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I agree with that, and I want to thank HRCA again for giving me the opportunity to kick the tires with you all. I know we had a wonderful tour of this site and adjacent facilities. I think what was most compelling to me was seeing the kids in coats at the adjoining park nearby that, you know, have this wonderful outdoor experience, but maybe could benefit from some additional amenities. And so my understanding is, we will contribute to this project potentially today, and you're redirecting some of your funding to be able to deal with the adjacent bike structure, and then maybe some of the camper and outdoor experiences. Am I getting that right?
Yeah, the backcountry operations where our base camp is is solely on our dime, so to speak. So, all this funding will be directed solely towards the regional park.
Perfect, yeah. Well, thank you so much, and I believe that you've presented a really wonderful plan. Before I say I'm in support, I will ask for any citizen comment on this, any citizen comment on this item? Okay, not seeing any citizen comment in the room, is there any citizen comment online? Troy?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
Colleagues, in the prior item I talked about, we know that, you know, we have a limited budget, and we have to make decisions on where to put our money. And usually, when we're working with our partners, we ask them to bring us a really good plan. I really think we've gotten that from HRCA. I think this is a really good plan and well worth the investment. It is well within the keeping of the normal practices and amenities we offer on our open space lands. So partnering with HRCA in this instance, I think, is great. So I do have a motion to approve Parks Trails Historic Resources and Open Space Funding Agreement between Douglas County and the Highlands Ranch Community Association for the construction of Wildcat Regional Park and the adjoining trail network in the amount of $3,500,000.
I second that motion, and I think you put it well earlier, Mike. The leadership of HRCA is incredibly unique. There's not a, there's not a community association or HOA like it in the world, I'm convinced. 95 delegates, all elected by their own little neighborhood, that go and act kind of like a legislative body with terrific leadership at the top, who is here today. Thank you, Monica. Really has taken it to task, debated it, brought it to us. We've worked on it for, definitely since, well, just before I joined the board, I was already getting to work on this project. So to see it come to fruition, just truly a historic day for Douglas County between the new baseball fields, soccer fields, and sheets of ice west that potentially could come as an exchange of the land exchange earlier, preserving that open space over there, that 185 acres of open space, and now being able to dedicate funds, really, when you go back, and I think if you take a time machine and ask a voter in November of 2022 what they envisioned when they voted overwhelmingly yes, nine out of 10 voters in Douglas County voting yes, to tax themselves to see great things come in the future. Here we are, almost three years later. I think they would be very proud of the work that has been done, very proud of this Board of County Commissioners, and in this instance, incredibly proud of the work that HRCA is doing as well. Taking something that we envisioned, best-case scenario, 202 acres, and turning it into 352 acres, thanks to the contributions of HRCA, just incredible, historic day, and I'm just proud to be a part of it.
Well said, colleagues. I couldn't agree more, and, you know, I go back to the original ballot measure, and I applaud this board for moving that to the ballot and giving the citizens the opportunity to vote on it. We saw 87% approval. And then doing the survey, I think we've done a lot of transparent, clean, open engagement with citizens, and all of that engagement, the answer was yes. We want open space, we want parks, we want all the things. So it's really not a binary decision. I think it's very much a both and, which is how I've always liked to govern in my time here, providing 202 acres of open space and passive recreation in concert with what we did earlier today on Zebulon. It truly does represent with our municipal contributions the largest delivery of recreational amenities in the history of our county. So I agree with Commissioner Van Winkle, it is a historic day, and you both are to be commended, and as well as our leadership. So thank you for serving our citizens so well. So I believe we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, guys. Congrats. So with that, we're gonna move on to Item 3C in our public hearing agenda items. Item 3C is the Compark Business Campus Metropolitan District Service Plan First Amendment, project file SV 2025-006. DJ Beckwith, Principal Planner, presenting for staff. Aye, DJ.
The project before you is a Service Plan First Amendment for Compark Business Campus Metropolitan District. Project number is SV 2025-006. I'm DJ Beckwith, representing Planning Resources. The applicant representative is Audrey Johnson. Chair Layden, given the late hour, I did want to extend the opportunity for an expedited staff report, or if the board would desire to bypass and go straight to questions.
Thank you for that, DJ. It has been a long afternoon, and I have read the packet, I believe my colleagues have as well. We've also met with the Director of Community Development to walk through some of these issues. So I'm okay with an abbreviated presentation.
Sounds good, I will get into it. The application is a request for approval of a Service Plan First Amendment for Compark Business Campus Metropolitan District for the purposes of allowing the district to increase their debt limit and decrease the proposed maximum interest rate on any debt in the event of a default. The amendment also includes language changes identifying the district's authority to create sub-districts as permitted in Colorado Revised Statute, Section 32. The district intends to organize a sub-district within its boundaries to finance public improvements through the issuance of subordinate bonds to fund roadway, drainage, grading, landscaping, parks, open space, and street improvements. The sub-district will not include residential property. Applications are sent to referral agencies for comment and review. All comments are provided to the applicant so that they have the opportunity to address outstanding issues. Applications are heard by the Planning Commission and then the Board of County Commissioners at public hearings. County procedures limit the Planning Commission reviews specifically to non-financial criteria. The applicant has thus requested that the amendment be reviewed solely by the board due to the amendment being wholly financial in nature. The board has granted similar such expedited process requests in the past. Here's the general location of Compark Business Campus on the star northern border there, and then here is the zoned location of it in red. The amendment proposes increase to total debt limit for the district from $50 million to $68.5 million. The amendment also includes changes to the maximum increase, or interest rate, reducing it from 15% to 12%, and the maximum underwriting discount, reducing it from 5% to 4%. The amendment does not propose any changes to mill levies, cost of improvements, or developer No significant comments were received during the referral period. Hilltop reviewed the materials provided and concluded that based on the information provided by the applicant, it is reasonable that the district will be capable of extinguishing all bonds within the parameters of the service plan. Colorado Revised Statute specify criteria for approval of special district service plans. The board must consider the following nine criteria in avowing service plans. Staff assessment of the approval criteria is detailed in your staff reports. Should the board find that the application complies with the criteria found at Colorado Revised Statute Title 32, the board may approve. This concludes my presentation. The applicant representative, Audrey Johnson, is here to present and answer questions as well.
Okay, great, thanks, DJ. Any questions for staff?
No questions.
Okay, none for me either, welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Audrey Johnson, and I'm here on behalf of the district, Compark Metropolitan Business District. It's quite a mouthful. We do have a presentation prepared, however, staff has done a wonderful job summarizing so far, and the presentation was provided in the packet. Unless there is a request to go over it, I'm happy to just answer any questions today.
You know, we'll take an abbreviated presentation, if you don't mind. And then DJ, if you want to put up, well, I guess, follow, you have slides?
Yes.
Okay, I guess following that, let's put up the legal approval criteria.
And we do have that in here as well.
Okay.
So again, this is for Compark Business Campus. Down, down, got it, thank you. The background of the district, the original service plan was approved in 1998 for E470 Business Metropolitan District, so it's been almost three decades since the initial approval. The boundaries are located within Douglas County and the town of Parker, and it is mostly a commercial project with some residential. We also wanted to highlight that the proposed sub-district will not include any residential Today's request is for First Amendment, again, to increase the debt capacity and create a sub-district as authorized per state law. The debt capacity would increase about $18.5 million. The sub-district is authorized underneath state law, and it would hold a Tabor election in order to issue its own debt. All eligible electors within the proposed boundaries would receive a ballot. Again, here are those statutory requirements, and then just a summary of our request for the First Amendment. Are there any questions today?
Thank you for that. Any questions for the applicant?
I do have one question. So, the new debt, assuming it's passed by the voters that live, or that, I guess, are within the district, will go until 2065, and there was previous debt that appears to go until 2041. Will this in any way compromise the ability to pay off the previous debt?
No.
Okay.
Anything additional, Commissioner?
I need that answer.
Okay, thanks. DJ, do you want to just pull up our staff memo on that with the approval criteria? Okay, so just kind of walking through this a little bit, can you help us understand why the existing service is inadequate for the present and projected needs?
Of course. So as I mentioned, the initial service plan was approved almost three decades ago.
Yeah.
And so since then, costs have continued to climb, and so we're requesting an increase in the debt capacity because more funds are needed for the district to provide services.
Okay. And just walk through, I mean, you mentioned that you obviously know residential housing or anything, what are some of the projected needs in infrastructure that you're going to be providing with the increased debt?
Yeah, so per statute, of course, you're all familiar, that metropolitan districts can only pay for certain public improvements. So all of the infrastructure that will be paid for by this additional funds are public infrastructure, including the usual roads, detention ponds, things of that nature, trails.
Trails, detention ponds, what was the first thing you said?
Roads.
Oh, and roads, okay, yeah, absolutely. Okay. Well, I don't think I have any addition, and let me just ask staff, so compliance with the comp plan?
DJ Beckwith, staff, yes, it is in compliance with the comprehensive master plan.
Okay, great. And then what was the vote at the PC?
So this item did not go to PC because it was generally financial in nature, and so the applicants had requested that we bypass that and go straight to the board for their decision.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, any additional questions from the board? Okay, not seeing any, I'm gonna ask for any comments in the room, any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. So with that, we'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
George? Yeah, no sweat.
Thank you.
Sorry. You ready to go, bro?
Yep. Well, thanks for stalling, Commissioner Teal, but given the approval, I did have that very important question about the debt limit. All the math seems to add up, and approval criteria appear satisfactory, therefore I move to approve Compark Business Campus Metropolitan District Service Plan First Amendment because it does meet all the approval criteria, this is project file SV 2025-006.
For me, the first two, the first two approval criterias do stand out. You know, colleagues, I don't know how familiar you are with this area. I have had reasons to be more and more familiar with the area. We do know that we are attracting businesses into this area, and in many ways, what was a sleepy warehouse district is somewhat booming, and something very recent, too. I wanted to make sure that we didn't have residents, that we're going to be settled with additional metro district debt. This is a commercial area, these are gonna be business owners, either owners of the property, or, you know, they rent the property out to their landlords. So they're gonna be looking at the bottom line, it's not going around Tabor, it is adhering to the taxpayer bill of rights, and for that reason, I do think all the things that you usually give me the willies about increasing debt for a metro district are answered, and I do second.
That's great. I fully agree with that analysis. I think the approval criteria have been met, and of course, we know from firsthand experience that that area really is moving fast. We've signed more NDAs than we care to admit, and we're seeing aerospace move into the area pretty rapidly, most recently, the ribbon cutting for Northrop Grumman. So I think we're really excited about what's happening up there, and my sense is that there is absolutely inadequate existing service, and more can be done to improve that. I think what's also compelling is the delta between today and when the original service plan was approved, so there's certainly a pretty significant gap that's compelling. So I'm certainly in support of this. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. With that, we're gonna move on to our next item, Item D, which is Antelope Crossing Rezoning, project file ZR 2024-015. We have Carolyn Washee-Freeland, Senior Planner, presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Carolyn Washi-Freeland, representing Planning Services. I wanted to give you an opportunity, because it's so late in the day, to either present an expedited presentation or forego the presentation and just do question and answers.
What is the board's preference?
I believe a brief presentation.
We'll do an expedited presentation, Carolyn. Yep, thank you.
Today, staff will be presenting the rezoning and minor development final plat request for antelope crossing property together in one presentation. Separate motions will be needed for the board's decision on both projects. The property is owned by DC LA 3 with CJ Kirsch here as the project's representative. The applicant requests approval to rezone a 42.61 acre parcel from agricultural one to large rural residential. The zoning would allow for a maximum gross density of one dwelling unit per 10 acres. The applicant is also seeking approval of a minor development plat to rezone the property 42.61 acres into four single-family lots. The lots will range in size between 10 to 11 acres. The intent of the rezoning process as described in the zoning resolution, section 2501, is to provide a process to amend the official zone district map with regards to the area of any zone district. And the intent of the minor development process is to provide a streamlined review process for the creation of 10 or fewer single-family residential lots. The Planning Commission heard the rezone and the minor development plat requests at its October 6 hearing and voted unanimously to recommend approval for this rezoning and minor development plat to the board. This slide shows the rezoning exhibit. The topography consists of rolling hills ranging from 6,260 feet to 6,300 feet in elevation, and steep slopes greater than 20% along the drainage way. The property contains flood plain along the Coal Creek Tributary, which runs through the site. The parcel is vegetated with grasses and tree groves. An off-site access roadway is proposed along the northern part of the property, and the proposed roadway will take direct access from Delbert Road. This slide shows the rezoning approval standards, which are discussed in detail within the The rezoning process is described in the zoning resolution, section 2504. The board shall evaluate the rezoning request, staff report, referral agency comments, applicant responses, and the Planning Commission recommendation and public comment and testimony and shall approve, approve with conditions, continue table for further study, remand to the Planning Commission, or deny the rezoning request. Here is the minor development plot exhibit showing the four single-family residential lots that will range in size between 10 acres to 11 acres, based on a successful rezoning of the large rural residential zone district. Lots will take access from an off-site private shared access drive that will take direct access from Delbert Road, and it's shown here in gray. No build zones shown here in brown are established on lots 1 through 3 to preserve historic drainage patterns, steep slopes, and flood plain areas associated with the Coal Creek Tributary. General purpose utility easements will be dedicated to the county along with the right-of-way for Delbert Road, shown here in orange, to allow for future widening. The approval standards for a minor development request are set forth in section 603 of the subdivision resolution and are listed on this slide. Staff's assessment of the approval standards are discussed in further detail in the staff Staff has evaluated the minor development in accordance with Article 6 of the subdivision resolution. Should the board find the approval standards for the minor development are met, the following conditions shall be considered for inclusion in the motion. Condition number one, prior to board final action on the minor development final plat, the request to rezone the property to the two large rural residential shall be approved. Condition number two, prior to recordation of the minor development final plat, the applicant shall record the 60-foot off-site access drainage and utility easement by separate Prior to recordation of the minor development plat, the applicant shall pay $1,500 to the Douglas County School District for cash in lieu of school and dedication. Condition number four, the applicant shall install a South Metro Fire and Rescue NOX box at the Cistern pump controls to be approved by South Metro Fire and the Rattlesnake Fire Department prior to billing permit issuance. Condition number five, prior to recordation of the minor development final plat, the applicant shall pay $750 to Douglas County for cash in lieu of park land dedication. Condition number six, prior to the recordation of the minor development final plat, the applicant shall record a declaration of a restrictive covenants, reserving the water beneath the property for the benefit of future landowners within the subdivision. Condition number seven, prior to recordation of the minor development final plat, technical corrections to the plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. Condition number eight, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 604.08 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters for the board's recommendation for a minor development request. This concludes staff's presentation on the rezoning and the minor development final plat requests. I'm available to answer questions on the staff report. Again, two separate motions will be needed for the board's decision on both projects. Mr. Kirsch is here to answer any questions for the project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Teal?
Just, really just one. Can you go back? I can't remember if we had a picture in the staff report of showing the gulch, Coal Creek gulch area. Can we just get that one more time, please?
The photo?
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this particular photo is facing east, and it's looking towards Elbert County, and it is kind of showing portions of the Coal Creek Tributary, which runs east to west, and it drains into the antelope crossing property.
Okay, but based on the relief on the property being considered here, it's typical of what we see in that picture.
Right. I can show you another view. This is looking to the west. It's got mainly rolling hills. It's undeveloped. And then this view is looking southward, and you can see some of the tree groves and where the drain, Coal Creek drainage goes into the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Additional questions?
I saw eight conditions present, right?
Yep.
Okay. No questions?
Okay, I don't have any questions for staff. I will ask the applicant. Do you have a presentation?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is CJ Kirsch, Tahoe Consulting, 9457 South Highlands Ranch Boulevard, Unit 101, Highlands Ranch, 80126. I do not have a formal presentation. I just was going to add a couple different things. Obviously, the presentation that Carolyn provided has been more than adequate to help describe what we're proposing here today. It's a piece of property that the property owner has been affiliated with since around 2006. He's got more property surrounding it as well. It is something that he has taken upon himself to develop as opposed to selling it commercially and letting it be developed that way. So it's something that, you know, he's enjoyed for quite a while, and I think the layout of the lots in conjunction with some of the topography, those features will really make a dynamic subdivision, so. And we did spend a lot of time with engineering in terms of making sure that we had the appropriate setbacks in some of the steeper areas along the gulch, but it really does lend itself to a pretty nice property for four lots. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks for that. So, you know, I'm looking at the letter from March 3 of 2025 from the Colorado Division of Water Resources, and it looks like your response on that is that they couldn't find the well, well was abandoned, so no further action?
Yes, that's correct. Again, the property is a much, all in all, it's a much bigger piece of property than this 40 acres, and there was some homesteading there over a very long period of time with some very rough water well locations that the state had a record of. We had some cultural consultants, environmental consultants scour the property to try to find evidence of the wellhead and could not find it.
Okay, great. I don't see any Reg 72 problems from the basin authority. What was the vote on this at Planning Commission?
Carolyn Freeland for staff. It was voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval.
Okay, great. And then let me ask the applicant, are you okay with the eight conditions as presented?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none from the board, I will ask for any comments from citizens, any citizen comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and two motions.
Colleagues, I wanted to just take another look at the land. I mean, obviously, we've spent enough time in the agricultural parts of the county since taking office to know, boy, what works really well for agriculture in Douglas County and what pieces of land, they just don't. Whereas, we know that we have many, many residents who really like to live on larger parcels with kind of dynamic landscape around them. So really, when we talk about the highest and best use, the most appropriate use, I do think even though we're always careful when we rezone agricultural land, this is probably a really good move. I think the landowner has done a good analysis on probably the best way to make use of the land and has probably put a really good plan for us. I don't see any problems with the criteria being in favor, so I do have a motion to approve the antelope crossing rezoning because it does meet all the approval criteria. Project file ZR 2024-015.
Second.
Great. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve antelope crossing minor development plat because it does meet all the approved criteria as presented with those eight conditions as presented and agreed to. This is project file SB 2024-066. Second.
Great. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously as well. Congratulations. So the next land use meeting public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 28, 2025 at 2:30 PM. We are adjourned.